All right, please stand forward. The Honorable Ladies.
Honorable Ladies. To the House of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Councilmember Days.
Yeah.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Stay here.
Oh, all right, sorry, here.
Councilmember Fitch.
Here.
Councilmember Gray.
Present.
Councilmember Clancy.
Here.
Councilmember Trachis.
Councilmember Harder.
Here.
Madam Chair, we have a quorum.
Is there a motion for approval of the Journal of the Meeting of February 4th, 2020?
I'll move.
Checking.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The February 4th Journal is approved. We have no bid openings this evening, so we will move to communications.
Madam Chair, we have no tax compromises this evening, so we will move to zoning matters. Under zoning matters, item number one, Second District.
Receive, file, and the county counselor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. So ordered.
Item number two, Third District.
Receive and file.
So ordered.
Item number three, Sixth District.
Receive, file, and the county counselor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number four, Sixth District.
Receive and file.
So ordered.
Item number five, Seventh District.
Receive and file.
So ordered.
There are no Rome Bridge Matters this evening. Moving on to other communications. Item number one, Seventh District.
Receive, file, and the county counselor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number two, Seventh District.
Receive, file, and refer to the Department of Planning, the Department of Transportation, and Public Works, the Board of Elections, and the Assessor's Office.
So ordered.
Item number three, All Districts.
Receive and file, same motion for item number four, and that will be the order.
Item number five, Second District. Receive and file.
So ordered.
Item number six.
Receive and file, and that will be the order.
Item number seven.
Receive, file, and the county counselor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number eight.
Receive, file, and the appropriation transfer be approved as requested.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number nine.
Receive, file, and the appropriation transfer be approved as requested.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number 10.
Receive, file, and the appropriation transfer be approved as requested.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number 11.
Receive, file, and the appropriation transfer be approved as requested.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number 12.
Receive, file, and the appropriation transfer be approved as requested.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number 13.
Receive, file, and the appropriation transfer be approved as requested.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number 14, Sixth District.
Receive, file, and the county counselor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number 15.
Receive, file, and the county counselor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number 16.
Receive, file, and the county counselor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number 17.
Receive, file, and the request be approved. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number 18.
Receive, file, and the county counselor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, same motion through item number 20, and that will be the order.
Item number 21.
Receive, file, and the county counselor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number 22.
Receive, file, and the county counselor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, same motion for item number 23, and that will be the order.
Item number 24, Seventh District.
Receive, file, and the county counselor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number 25, Fourth District.
Please hold for additional information.
So ordered.
Item number 26, Fifth District.
Receive, file, and the county counselor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number 27.
Receive, file, hold on the order of business, and refer to the council as a committee of the whole, same motion through item number 28, and that will be the order.
Item number 29, Fifth District.
Receive, file, and the appointment be approved as recommended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Please read the add-ons.
Under other communications, item number one.
Receive, file, and the county counselor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, same motion for item number two, and that will be the order. Report to the County Executive.
Thank you, Lisa, and good evening, everyone. Yesterday was a historic day in county government, and one that will measure both the past and the future. While we cannot control the past, we can embrace the future and shape it in a way that is inclusive to everyone who lives and works in St. Louis County. I look forward to working with each of you, sitting here beside me, and with the public as we move forward. As we look for a new police chief, I have three goals for the Police Department. First, to keep us safe. Our Police Department's primary mission is to keep our community safe, and they do a really good job. We expect them to continue to do that. We also expect our Police Department to respect all people. The Police Department must always respect the citizens and the community. They must always, the leadership must always, respect the officers during the promotion process, and our community must always respect our officers for the life-risking work that they provide when they patrol our neighborhoods. Our Police Department must also adapt to latest strategies. The Police Department must adapt to changing times, to new tactics, and to new technologies. This will require collaborating with other stakeholders in the community, other law enforcement agencies, and the prosecuting attorney. I have said all along that change begins at the top, and it did. With my appointments of four new members to the five-member Police Board, I encouraged Chief Belmar to lead the Police Department through this transition, and he has. That included creating a new diversity and inclusion unit, promoting Lieutenant Wild Haber, and putting Keith in charge of this unit. Chief Belmar shared with me last year, before I became County Executive, that he was considering retiring in 2020, so this was really not really much of a surprise. His career is long and accomplished, and I appreciate his good work. The process of changing Police Department leadership will be thoughtful and orderly. I've already begun discussing the future leadership with members of the Police Board, and I look forward to working with them as the next police chief is chosen. This is an opportunity for an important dialogue about the future of the Police Department, and I am confident that that future will be built on a strong foundation that already exists. Part of that future will be Lieutenant Wild Haber in his new role, and he can help us shape the Police Department that has a hiring and promotion process that is barrier-free. That means no discrimination of any kind for anyone. The settlement agreement finalized yesterday is fair to Keith, it's fair to the taxpayers, and acknowledges what Keith survived in the Police Department. We did not believe that an appeal was likely to succeed, and this would have resulted in taxpayers paying almost $22 million, including the original judgment, the interest penalties, and legal fees over the next 18 months to two years. The amount is significant, and it will serve an important lesson to county government and to employers of all of the St. Louis region. Discrimination is completely unacceptable. Voters adopted Proposition P funds for public safety, and that's how it should be used. I made sure, through my direction to the Department of Administration, that no Proposition P funds will be used for this settlement. We'll be using funds from general revenue. We are planning to bond the settlement cost so that the payments can be spread out over years. This will protect the integrity of our budget and will keep us from disrupting normal county operations. I will be asking the council to approve those bonds. Finally, I'd like to call on our state legislators to pass the Missouri Nondiscrimination Act, a bill that I co-sponsored 14 years ago. It would provide employer protections to the LGBT community, along with housing and access to basic care. Lieutenant Wild Haber's case shows us how much we need this legislation in Missouri. The jury was disgusted by what they heard, and all of Missouri was as well. Call your legislators now and ask them to pass the Mona Act. Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you. All right, there is no report of special committees. We will move on to the public forum portion of our agenda. This evening, we have 15 speakers. When you are called, please come forward to the podium, state your name for the record. Please also understand that you have three minutes to speak. There is a clock at the end of the dais, and we will help keep you on track. And finally, if you could please address your comments to the chair, that would be appreciated. And keep your applause to a minimum also, because it does make it hard to hear the next speaker's name. First speaker, please.
First speaker, Matt Crasilius.
I'm Matt Crasilius. You guys know I've spoken with many of you on many occasions, I'm the business manager for the County Police Association. I have, it won't take anywhere near three minutes, so we'll start off on the right foot here. Now, the Wild Haber case has been settled, and we have finally received confirmation that the administration no longer intends to use Prop P funds to pay the settlement. We're hoping that the police staff contract that was negotiated and agreed to will be in front of you very soon. We have over 300 Police Department staff employees that still need to see their fair share of Prop P. Speaking of Prop P, revenues in 2019 were up 2% to over $51.1 million. Madam Chair, the council voted to have a hearing, a committee of the whole hearing on Prop P. Do we know when? We can expect to?
We are working to schedule it. We will have the hearing in due time.
In due time, okay. That's all. Thank you.
Next speaker, Rachel Major.
My name is Rachel Major. I'm a representative for the St. Louis County Police Department staff, and this evening I would like to speak to you of a sad reality. Last week, one of my fellow staff members stood before you and spoke to the necessity of decompression. He spoke of the urgency to take care of the staff who have worked here since before he was born. As I hope you will soon see, our agreed-upon contract compensates the many loyal and patient staff members according to years of service. Your final approval of that contract will completely eliminate the police staff compression issue, and there's very clearly a compression issue. Security officers, records report clerks, and 911 dispatchers total almost half of represented staff members. The majority of that group, the experienced workforce, make merely $50 a week, more than the newest members of their bureaus. More than 40 security officers with up to 13 years' experience, more than 60 911 dispatchers with up to 15 years' experience, and the record room, almost in its entirety, are all included in a massive group of wage compression and discrepancy. Only a dozen people across three bureaus are the lucky few not being compensated at the lowest wages within each pay class. Our department clerks with 20 or more years of experience are so stagnant in wages that only one of that dozen is at the top of her salary range. So why do we stay? I've discovered that there are some positions occupied by the most senior of us, simply due to the sad reality being they cannot afford to retire. As underpaid and stagnant as our position compensations have become, we have not kept up with the cost of living. We have not moved upwards in our pay scales, and we do not all have the luxury of supplementing our salaries with overtime work for additional pay. Think of the consequences of what happened so long ago. For so many of us, we were years, even decades into our careers, when the boss announced one day that a performance-based merit raise, we were told would come each year, was no longer a reality. A merit raise that was included in the deal when we took our jobs was gone forever. More than a decade later, without adequate increases to keep up with our national inflation rate, staff are now forced to face the option to continue to work much longer than planned or retire and accept the more than 30% pay cut that looms if they do so. I am a 20-year employee, and there are people represented who have worked here longer than I have been alive. They're still not at the top of their salary range. Please, when the time comes, you can help me ensure that they have the opportunity to finally work for the compensation rates that they have very much earned over the decades. I've previously shown the funding is available, and the money to take care of all of us is there. The final steps after such a long journey should be easy for all of you to take. Our community is looking to each of you. I know that supporting the Police Department and its staff is something that they are very much interested in, so on behalf of the staff, the officers, and the Police Association, we all appreciate your consideration and hope to have your support when the time comes. Thank you.
Next speaker, Sarah Van Werth.
Good evening. My name's Sarah Van Werth. I live in District 3, and I'm a non-commissioned employee with the St. Louis County Police Department. Within the County Police Department, there are 36 units with around 300 civilian employees. To state the obvious, none of us got into a career with county government to earn high-paying salaries, but is it not fair of us to expect a justified salary? Within the Police Department, many non-commissioned employees have echoed these feelings of being undervalued by St. Louis County. In 2019, we were thankful that you passed the officers' pay increases. No one would argue that the officers did not deserve their raises or do not deserve their hazard pay. Officers do difficult work, but behind the scenes, there are professional staff doing what is necessary to keep the department functioning so that the officers can focus on this important work. In my office, the Bureau of Research and Analysis, we do our part for the department to maintain accreditation, perform crime analysis, grant management, policy creation and maintenance, and community engagement. Excuse me. We must be able to make maps, use programming software, perform data analytics, research, and write policies, and manage grants. In fact, between 2016 and 2018, our Bureau collectively earned the department $10.5 million in grants that went to fund 54 police officer positions, the ShotSpotter program, the Highway Safety Unit, and the hiring of additional detectives. Say that you strive for internal and market-based pay equity, but for my Bureau, we reviewed the publicly available salary data for government employees, as well as individual 2019 budgets of 18 different police departments in the St. Louis County metropolitan area. The results clearly show that the analysts and associates in my Bureau are paid far below market rate. My coworkers and I make 25% less, on average, than our peers in similar roles. The average salary for a Police Department employee in the St. Louis area, whose main tasks involve research, analysis, and accreditation, is $60,226. The average salary for those positions in the County Police Department is $47,974. Pay won't always be the same, but this is wildly disproportionate. It is the policy of the St. Louis County Government to develop compensation strategies to attract and retain employees in highly competitive job classes. This goal has fallen short time and time again. This creates a hostile work environment and can decrease productivity. When employees aren't fairly compensated for their work, where is the incentive to work harder each day or to take on more work year after year as we're asked to do? These issues can't stay internal. Over time, the whole county will feel the effects as the output and quality of our work unintentionally suffers as our employees are neglected. We hope, we really hope that you guys will support us if you ever get to see the budget, so thank you for your time.
Next speaker, Melissa Rousen.
My name is Melissa Rusain. I live at 10710 Wordak in unincorporated St. Louis County. Today, I would like to talk to you about transparency and truth. After reviewing past speeches by active volunteers, there is almost no mention or support of privatization, none. In fact, there is immense criticism on how poorly the situation with the RFP and the vets was handled. How, since August, have we been in a spay-and-neuter crisis because of this mess? The public has asked for transparency. We have asked for ethics, mentoring, and qualified personnel. At multiple points, we have said it's fixable. It's all there in the archives of every one I've been to. We have asked for staff, volunteers, and the community to be provided an opportunity to come together and discuss what our community needs to work together towards shaping our future shelter, and we were never provided that. There has never been any discussion, no engagement, nothing. I've written to you a couple times, and you've never responded to me once. Volunteers did not ask for that extra million dollars that magically impaired in the budget for the RFP, when any given day, the shelter does not have soap or paper towels. Don't even get me started on your employees who haven't had raises in who knows how long. We did not ask to be fired from a job we do for free. We didn't ask for a situation that now presents itself with a complete and total lack of solid, articulated plan that ensures the humane treatment of these animals for months and months to come. Just like when the vets quit. Volunteers did not ask the county to cheat. We wanted fair, ethical, humane, and transparent practices. Is that what community is getting? After the staff meeting yesterday, what would, why would people stay? Therefore, no staff, a volunteer population that was wiped out, no vets, yet taxpayers should trust you that everything's going to be okay. The county health department could not even stay in the shelter for two weeks with replacement volunteers who were offered comp time in exchange for their service. We did not want a repeat of the vet crisis, where absolutely no transition or interiorian plan is in place. In addition, let us not forget about those animals that county needlessly put down due to space because of this vet crisis. Many of you are up here today because you want to preserve life. This has been a big topic of yours lately. The lives of our employees, the lives of our animals, are they not significant? Do not put this RFP on volunteers. Why would you hire Mandy Ryan and their director and put all these other positions out there and create a new advisory board only to send out an RFP for privatization? I leave you with this thought. Is transparency costing, charging the public almost $1,000 for public records for a sunshine request? Why is our county leadership going behind the backs of its voters and putting RFPs together secretly behind closed doors? What are you hiding from us taxpayers?
Next speaker, Jack Bronk.
My name is Jack Bronk. I'm a board member from Missouri Canine Friends. I live at 519 Redondo Drive, Chesterfield, Missouri. I'm here tonight as a rescue partner of St. Louis County Animal Control Care and Control. Last week, we at Missouri Canine pulled two puppies from your shelter with parvo, and a couple of weeks before that, we pulled an adult dog from you as well. Two years ago, when we first started our organization, we pulled two adult dogs from you guys, and then decided at that point to pull our dogs from other places because we didn't want to deal with the politics that were involved with coming to St. Louis County. Being a rescue partner, I'm asking you not to put this RFP out. I'm asking you not to privatize the shelter. The shelter has been improving greatly in the past two months, and putting this RFP out will hurt what is happening currently. Instead of putting out an RFP, give them the resources they need to continue succeeding. You've asked for a million dollars. The shelter has improved greatly over the last couple of months. The live release rate for December was 93%, and for January was 96%. This is thanks to staff and volunteers at the shelter. The staff that is helping to make these numbers happen are currently being told they may not have a job in a few months due to privatization. Now, also, as a St. Louis County resident and voter, I ask that you guys, you put the extra million dollars in there. You see the improvement that's happened over the last 60 days of what's happened with the new staff and the new involvement of everybody going on? Why not take that money and put it into improving it more and then claiming it for yourselves instead of giving it to somebody else? Thank you.
Next speaker, Mandy Ryan.
I didn't expect to get name-dropped earlier, so no pressure. I'm Mandy Ryan. I am currently employed by St. Louis County as the Animal Population Manager at Animal Care and Control. To give you a little bit of background on me as a person and a taxpayer, I've worked in the animal-related field for 19 years now. I've had experience as a kennel manager, a vet technician, dog trainer, animal control officer, animal cruelty investigator. I've run an intake room at a high-intake government shelter. I've run a nonprofit licensed rescue and advocacy group for animals. I actually ran Missouri Canine Friends before I accepted my position with St. Louis County, and for the past several years, I've been involved in fighting breed discrimination, animal cruelty, and fighting to help shelters achieve no-kill status. Back in 2017, when you were hiring a new director, I was actually interviewed for that position, but wasn't hired. And then earlier this year, I was interviewed again for director and also population manager, and they did hire me as population manager. My first day in the shelter was December 9th, and on my first day, there was over 400 animals in the building. There were big dogs crammed in small cages. There was dogs labeled rescue-only in the back, simply for biting at the leash or being high-energy. The euthanasia numbers were high. Staff morale was really low. I pretty much was greeted with sighs and eye rolls on my first day, so it was fun walking into that on my first day. And I saw burnout and compassion fatigue all over the faces I worked with daily. I look back at some of the numbers from 2019, and the live release rate was ranging anywhere from in the 60s to the 80s percent, and like someone mentioned earlier, 96% was our live release rate in January. Since I've started, we've been able to strengthen our relationship with the rescue community and significantly increase the number of rescues willing to work with us. Several rescue relationships were damaged in the past, and people were pretty much refusing to work with county. And since then, they've been helping us network animals to help them get out of the building, and they've been helping us increase our live release rate. It's now been about two months since my start date. Today, we had 157 animals in the building when I checked this morning. At one point in January, we were actually down to the 140s. Staff and volunteer morale are up, and people are excited about coming to work. People have hope. People that were planning on quitting are still employed with us. You guys promised the public for improvements with the shelter, and you have delivered. We have delivered. If you put the RFP out, my job will be in jeopardy, along with most of the hard-working staff at ACC. I know there's a couple here tonight also that aren't speaking, but they're here. By putting the RFP out, you're pretty much setting us up to fail, and we are being told to keep doing what we're doing because we're doing a great job, not to worry about the RFP, but we might not have a job in a few months. It's really hard to go to work every day and have that in the back of your head. I'm asking you, as a taxpayer and a voter, not to put the RFP out to begin with, because this pretty much looks like you're setting us up to fail, and it's really hard to succeed with that going on. Honestly, the RFP should not be an option at this point at all, and as a taxpayer, I'm asking you not to put it out because privatizing will actually end up probably costing the county taxpayers more money.
That's right. I'm going to need you to wrap up.
Okay. We're going to be paying more money for someone else to come in and run it, and if we privatize, the sunshine law no longer applies, so no one will be able to get records on the animals or see what exactly is going on. So my personal and professional advice is that the RFP is not what's best for the animals of St. Louis County nor the county employees. Thanks.
Next speaker, Tashonda True.
My name is Tashonda True, and I live in St. Louis County. First, I want to say I appreciate the county for the attempt at being transparent. After almost a year of pleading, you finally released the internal investigation report. Now, I understand your reluctance, but what's worse is that this county didn't learn too much after the first three deaths, and it seems like you still didn't get it after five. Let me try to explain it to you in less than three minutes. After my son died, I expressed to you how important transparency, accountability, compassion, empathy, humanity, and respect was. That was my problem with mischilery. Almost a year later, I see the county still have those same problems. Let me tell you why I came to that conclusion. I know your county lacks those qualities because it's no way their report should have been released before the families were notified by the county. I've been asking for their report for months. Matter of fact, I I was in the grocery store, and I could hardly stand after reading the first two pages. Did any of you read the report? In this report, you have correctional staff with concerns for my son. You have staff stating my child was fine until the second week in February. Staff witnessed his health declining and vomiting, but yet this nurse said he was faking. Do you know how it made me feel inside to know all the suffering my baby endured at the hands of this nurse who took an oath to do no harm? This nurse's action showed how indifferent he was to the life of my son. Because if he really took his vitals, we all know a dying person's vitals are not normal. So it's not so much that he thought he was faking. Truth is, he didn't care because he was an inmate, and that's a culture that needs to change.
Next speaker, Tom Sullivan.
Madam Chair, after you were selected as council chair last month, I questioned if it was a smart choice for the council. I would question it even more now. Changing council meetings to 1:00 p.m. for one meeting a month makes no sense. It may be convenient for you, Ms. Clancy, but it will mean less citizens will be able to attend. Years ago, meetings were at 3:00 in the afternoon, but there were many complaints about the time, and meetings were then moved to 6:00 p.m. Then there were complaints about that time, especially from people living in North and South County who had to fight rush hour traffic, so it was moved to 6:30. Everyone seems to like that time, but now you want to shut the public out for one meeting a month. The incompetence of the Page administration has been on full display with the Wildheaper case. First of all, it should never go into trial. Beth Orwick was appointed county councilor last July by the county executive, and he had high praise for her. The first thing she should have done was to figure those matters in which the county was most vulnerable and address them. Given the facts of the Wildheaper case, it should have been a high priority, if not the highest. It seems the lawsuit could have been settled for less than $1 million, but the county councilor blames the police board for not settling, and police board members blamed her. Where was the county executive while this was going on? The $10.25 million was a pretty steep amount to agree to, but this is an election here, and Sam Page doesn't want any more criticism for being unsympathetic to a gay police officer. He's had quite a lot already. Still isn't clear how the verdict is to be paid. Last week, the county executive said it will be paid from the county's self-insurance fund with no Prop P money. Last October, I was told there was $6.3 million balance in the fund, but insurance might cover part of the verdict. Despite several months having gone by since the verdict, it still isn't known what the county's insurance will cover, if anything. Or maybe it's being covered up that insurance won't cover anything. Now, it's being said the verdict will be paid with a bond that will be paid off over several years. This could add several million dollars more to the total cost, maybe going to $15 million, depending on the length. Meanwhile, the cost of the outside lawyers for the other fiasco, the leases at the old Northwest Plaza just keep climbing. It started out at not to exceed $75,000, then not to exceed $150,000, then not to exceed $225,000, and now not to exceed $275,000, at least until that amount gets succeeded. Should be remembered that I told the council that everything about the Northwest leases stink. Sam Page said the leases and the facilities would provide a great value for St. Louis County. That hasn't been the case. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Next speaker, Tim McAtier.
Good evening. My name is Tim McAtier. I'm the president of IC Solutions, the incumbent provider of fund services at the Justice Services location, and I am voicing tonight concerns and inconsistencies with the recent procurement, valuation, and proposed award. Starting with the February 7th letter from Executive Page to council members, that had a rate of .049 cents per minute and no fees. In comparison, our offer was .016 per minute and no fees. We are three times lower the price of what you guys have before you as a recommendation. Also know that the RFP, 40% of the points were to go to cost. So by those numbers, we would get 40 points, and the recommended vendor would get 13. It's impossible to make that up for the rest of the RFP, especially considering that we agreed to provide all the technologies and services of the entire RFP in full compliance without any objections or any changes in it. We agreed 100%. Our rate was over three times lower than their rate. The second thing I want to bring your attention to is after the evaluations are completed, instead of moving forward with an award, they then decided to issue a best and final offer, asking vendors to re-quote their prices, even though nothing had changed in the RFP. We're very confused about that. They've never done that before on the RFP, for at least the last seven. So they did an RFP, and then specifically, your county purchasing department contacted our company and told us that they did not want a best and final offer that would not include fees. They told us to give them a BAFO offer that included fees, which is very troubling now that we learn that they selected the offer without fees. Nevertheless, our .016 was our offer, no fees, much lower. Some other items I want to point out in the letter from Executive Page was that, you know, in the body of the letter, it talks about 10 cents a minute for video visitation, that that's what the provider would charge. However, if you look down in the chart, 20-minute video visitation session is $5. That'd be 25 cents a minute, so that's inaccurate. We actually proposed 10 cents a minute. So our belief is they probably did 10 cents a minute plus a $3 fee to come up with the 5. We're not sure, but that's certainly not accurate, and it's not consistent. The other part of the letter I want to draw your attention to is the statement that there were over 50,000 fees, of 595, were levied in 2019. That is completely inaccurate.
Sir, your time is up. You're going to need to wrap up.
Okay. So I have sent you a letter. This is way too much information to provide in three minutes. I did send each of you a letter, and I will leave a copy behind for the clerk, but we have a lot more to say on this. I would advise you not to vote for this thing until you really check this out, because there are a lot of problems here. Thank you.
Next speaker, Xena Hackworth.
Good evening. For Black History Month again, I'm here another Tuesday evening. We all know that Margaret Sanger, well, I don't know if you know this, but Margaret Sanger, the founder of Planned Parenthood, implemented a program called the Negro Project. And as I mentioned before, she said, "We do not want word to go out, that we want to exterminate the Negro population." Well, the Negro Project is still going on today. Before 1973, Black women did not want to abort their children, even though it was marketed to them. They said no. After 1973, on January 22nd, 1973, when abortion became legal in this country, the abortion industry made an effort to market abortion to Black women. In 1978, I was probably about 13 or 14 at the time. In 1978, Fay Waddleton became the first Black woman to head Planned Parenthood. And when I learned that at about the age of 13 and 14, I said, "That's how they're going to kill us. They are going to put a Black face on it." Well, today, we're 13% of the population, and we have 36% of the abortions. We are no longer at replacement rate in the Black community because they have targeted the Black community. Martin Luther King Jr. said, "The Negro cannot win if he is willing to sacrifice the future of his children and for imminent, excuse me, for immediate personal comfort and safety. Injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere."
Next speaker, Angie Zoric.
Hello. Angie Zoric, Oakville, Missouri. I just really came today to support Tashonda. I have talked to her a couple of times over the last few days, and I think it was pretty shocking for her to see the behavior of the nurse at the jail. And I know that we've done a few things, you know, the board has been a really big help in some of the procedures for filing complaints, but I think we're still lacking somewhere really big because, of course, on December 27th, we lost another inmate that I think could have been saved. So I really just hope that we can keep working on that. And, you know, I went to the board meeting last month, and I know that they had scheduled one for January 30th, but then somehow it got canceled, and, you know, I just think it's very inconsiderate to pass out records like that to media when the families haven't been notified first or been had a chance to at least absorb that information. Flustered, I can't remember what else I wanted to say. Anyway, I think that's the main thing that I'd like to see worked on. I know there is one other thing that, I had a conversation with somebody the other day, and I know we've had police officers' mothers come in here and talk about how hard that job is and how, you know, how they're risking their lives every day to protect the citizens. And while I appreciate that very much, I think that the sensitivity toward police should really, there's a factor of police suicides, and it's a pretty staggering number of police officers who are committing suicide. And I learned over the weekend that, for some reason, they're not on the wall of the lost officers in the St. Louis County out here somewhere. And I just thought that was kind of sad that we're not, you know, that there's a stigma about suicide, and that even carries over into the police department. So I just wanted to mention that. Thanks.
Next speaker, Kristi Hessel.
Hi, I'm Kristi Hessel. I'm from South County. Thank you for the privilege of speaking tonight. I've attended the previous two county council sessions, and the word that came to my mind was professionalism, or perhaps the lack of it. A definition of professional is, quote, "worthy of or appropriate to a professional person, competent, skillful, or assured." Two weeks ago, the non-binding resolution recognizing the 25 years that Missouri Right to Life has participated in the March for Life in Washington, D.C., was voted down on partisan lines. The resolution was merely a recognition of the work and dedication of this group. Voting for it would have shown some degree of respect for colleagues that have a different point of view, but that didn't happen. Fine. Then we got treated to a cheesy cartoon of four women being depicted as, quote, "the squad," praising them for their strength. This post merely demonstrated arrogance, immaturity, and a lack of professionalism. Last week, we watched our St. Louis County squad move legislation forward that will change the council meeting time from 6:30 p.m. to 1:00 p.m. for one meeting each month. The justification for such a move was to support working families and increase community engagement. This change will probably decrease such engagement since parking in Clayton during working hours is hard to come by, and most working people are working at 1:00 p.m. Such concerns were dismissed with the suggestion that people use public transportation. Why not just say, "Let them eat cake"? In addition, we were reminded that certain council members have children that need their attention in the evenings, and this was an accommodation to their needs. Again, the word "professional" came to my mind. If evening council meetings were such an issue, why run for a public office that makes such demands? Then the same council member who was so adept with posting cartoons was unable to answer a basic question about $1.5 million that would purchase computer-related equipment and training for police department computer programmers and developers. Would the money come from Proposition P funds or general revenue? That's a very basic question, especially since we're being told that the Prop P fund is over budget. We weren't given an answer since no one knew. If competence, skill, or self-assurance is a quality of professionalism, it wasn't on display. I hope to see things get better. The "it's all about me" attitude needs to take a hike.
Ma'am, your time is up. You're going to need to wrap up, please.
Let's get serious about the business of St. Louis County for everyone.
Next speaker, Reverend Phil DeVal.
Good evening, council. This is February Black History Month, and I always give homage to the words, "God of our weary years, God of our silent tears, thou who hast bought us thus far. On the way, thou hast, by thy might, led us into the light." It's interesting, because I'm off-base, because I've been listening instead of focusing on what I was going to say. But I'm going to start by saying, "Thank God for change," because when I look at this council, I see sisters. And I ain't talking about just the sisters. Talking about sisters. Then I see us. Let's talk about the culture and the history of LGBTQ. No, don't keep throwing the rocks up here. That history started and should have been stopped under the leadership of the police department. Don't throw rocks at them. Look at the history of the culture of St. Louis County Police that produced the lawsuit. And they're discharged to handle it. We ought to grow up, community. And I support the rights of all. But the culture, 2014, when Ferguson blew up, who was the chief of Ferguson? A former St. Louis County police commander that helped participate in blowing this city up. And it's still not fixed, so we need to change as a community. Animal rights, I wish the animals could vote, too. But when we're done, we have to support you. You're our leadership. Not keep bashing you, because then you can't hear us. You hear us complain. Tom, I like you, but I disagree with you, sir, because I'm going to quote history. How much time do I have? I want to apologize to Tashonda Tru and all of the families. That was a misstep, so on behalf of the Justice Advisory Board, we apologize. What we don't apologize is we're going to still fight for transparency and accountability, not just in the jail, but in the police department.
Next speaker, Stacy Washington.
My name is Stacy Washington. I'm a resident of District 3. And when I was planning on attending the meeting tonight, I was thinking about whether or not I should address you, because it's my third meeting, and I did speak one time before. But I realized I needed to say a few things to you guys, because I've been sitting here and watching you guys and listening to you. I attended a meeting of the whole, and I feel like there's a few things that need to be said. The pastor offered some pretty interesting comments there, and I echo one of them in saying, "Thank you." I think the reason why you guys are sitting up here and you're elected to this position is because you've chosen...
Animal rights, I wish the animals could vote too. But when we're done, we have to support you. You're our leadership. Not keep bashing you, because then you can't hear us. You hear us complain. Tom, I like you, but I disagree with you, sir, because I'm going to quote history. How much time do I have?
Twenty minutes.
I want to apologize to Tashonda Troop and all of the families. That was a misstep, so on behalf of the Justice Advisory Board, we apologize. What we don't apologize is we're going to still fight for transparency and accountability, not just in the jail, but in the police department.
Next speaker, Stacy Washington.
My name is Stacy Washington. I'm a resident of District 3. And when I was planning on attending the meeting tonight, I was thinking about whether or not I should address you, because it's my third meeting, and I did speak one time before. But I realized I needed to say a few things to you guys, because I've been sitting here and watching you guys and listening to you. I attended a meeting of the whole, and I feel like there's a few things that need to be said. The pastor offered some pretty interesting comments there, and I echo one of them in saying thank you. I think the reason why you guys are sitting up here and you're elected to this position is because you've chosen to take on the responsibility of protecting and serving us by being members of the county council. It's a job that apparently the rest of us who are sitting out here don't want to do. But with that job comes an enormous amount of responsibility. Over the past three weeks, I've seen you guys take on all kinds of actions that have impacts on pretty much every area of my life. I tend to pay much more attention to national politics, but I'm beginning to realize that the meetings that I really need to attend the most are these. And I think that's why you're seeing such a pushback on moving the meetings to 1:00 p.m. But I'm willing to do that. I have the time, so I'm not going to complain about that. But I do want to remind all of you that while some of you may be members of the Squad and some of you may be members of the GOP, you represent all members of St. Louis County. And so I was really disturbed, not just because I'm a pro-life person, but because there's a huge part of our county that is pro-life, that has been attending the March for Life, and it was very upsetting to hear the Republican members say that they felt a huge schism had developed because you guys wouldn't vote with them on a non-binding resolution. It's not a matter of whether or not you're a member of the Squad. It's a, it's a matter of the fact that you represent all of us. And it's a huge issue for me personally, as a taxpayer, to think that there are things that will need to get done on this county council that will not get done because of the partisanship. This is local government, and you all are the closest thing to us in our local government. You're closer to us in representation than our members down in Jefferson City. But I can say I've had more interaction with them, and I hope to change that by attending these meetings. So my sincere hope for you is that you will remember not just me, but the hundreds of thousands of other people who are not coming to these meetings, but you represent. Yes, you each have a district that you represent, but you each also represent every one of us, because we not only pay your salaries, but we are impacted by every vote and decision that you make. I see Lisa's looking at the time. I have 14 seconds. I'll close by saying, I'm praying for you guys, not for the Squad and for the GOP, but for all of the county council members and for Councilman Page, who I have been aware of since we lived in Olivette and you were running for other offices. I thought you looked really familiar. I just realized that. You guys have a responsibility to us. I'm not demanding anything from you, but I'm reminding you because you, your actions have repercussions on us. So please remember that. Thank you.
Final speaker, Michael Burton.
Hi, all. Michael Burton here. Good to see y'all. Thank you, guys, for taking the time to listen to us, like you councilwoman days. A misstep? A misstep? I don't know who that reverend is, but Tashonda Troop lost her son. That's beyond a misstep. I'm going to change it up tonight and make this short and sweet. At least, I'll try to. You all know we wanted to save 15 to 20 to 25 acres above Tower T. 15 to 20 to 25 acres. I met with the housing developer this past week, and he is willing to consider saving 10 acres above Tower T. 10. Now, 10 acres is less than our bare minimum, but we're willing to consider it, and here's why. First, they have gone out of their way to listen to the community and not only save some green space, but to enrich it. And I can't thank McKelvey Homes enough for that. Second, if we can find a way to save 10 acres above Tower T, which would only be about 250 feet above the driving range, this would eliminate the possibility of a giant 75-foot to 100-foot net above the driving range. Netting that would not only be ugly, but would also prevent the deer, the turkey, the foxes, the birds, the coyotes, and all the others to visit Tower T, something that gives many of us joy and would be something that the 62 different species of birds, including bald eagles, could get caught up in. If they want to do it how it is now, we got to put up a big net. We don't want to put up a big net. We just need 10 acres, and we need your help. The new owners of Tower T recently did a poll. These are the results. They asked what they'd like to see above it. I'll keep it short. We got three options here: netting with metal poles, wooden poles, obstructed view, and a wooded buffer. Overwhelmingly, the wooded buffer wins. Please help us save 10 acres above Tower T. You guys have the ability, the vote, and the funds. Let's finish the job. We're this close. Thank you, all. Thank you, Madam Chair.
That concludes public forum this evening. Proceed with introduction of bills.
Bill Number 40, introduced by Councilmember Clancy, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to accept a grant of up to $15,000 from the Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services, appropriating the same for support of the hepatitis A outbreak project and authorizing execution of necessary documents. Bill Number 41, introduced by Councilmember Clancy, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to accept up to five grants of up to $68,278 annually from the Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services, appropriating the amount of up to $68,278 for support of the tuberculosis outreach services program and authorizing the county executive to execute necessary documents. Bill Number 42, introduced by Councilmember Harder, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to grant Metropolitan St. Louis Sewer District two easements located on, over, and under two parcels of land at Spirit of St. Louis Airport in connection with improvements to a pump station. Bill Number 43, introduced by Councilmember Clancy, an ordinance appropriating and setting apart the sum of $80,551 from the unappropriated balance of the general revenue fund for support of the salary and benefits of a new grant compliance accounting manager position within the Division of Fiscal Management. Bill Number 44, introduced by Councilmember Clancy, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a contract with Lewis G. Chiadini, Inc., doing business as Chiadini Architects, for professional engineering services related to renovation of the Queenie Park Greensfelder Recreation Complex. Madam Chair, that is all the bills.
Moving on to perfection.
Bill Number 20, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
Please hold.
Bill Number 20 is held.
Substitute Bill Number 1 for Bill Number 385, introduced by Councilmember Dunaway.
Please hold. Substitute Bill Number 1 for Bill Number 385 is held.
Bill Number 5, introduced by Councilmembers Fitch, Tracus, and Harder.
This is the opportunity for the voters to weigh in on whether or not they want to ban red light street cameras. That's that bill. I am waiting on the council chairwoman to announce a committee of the whole meeting, and we've talked, so I'm hoping that will be in march, so I move to hold Bill 5.
Bill Number 5 is held.
Bill Number 29, introduced by Councilmembers Clancy, Daye, Dunaway, and Walton Gray.
We had a good hearing on this bill today. I would like to move to perfect Bill Number 29. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Roll call.
Councilmember Daye? Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
This is the bill for those in the audience who don't have it in front of it that would basically create a new ordinance that would allow police officers to issue a summons to someone that's been convicted of domestic violence or has an order of protection against them. There is a current federal law that covers this. It's a federal felony. There are serious concerns that came up today during our, our hearing. I would hope that the members of the council would take those concerns into account and hold this for further discussion, for us to offer an alternative to this. So at this point, I'm not ready to perfect it, so I will vote no.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Councilmember Harder?
I, too, have concerns over this. We had a hearing today. We talked to law enforcement here in county afterwards. They have serious concerns about it, and I'm hoping that they will come forward here in the next week or so and express their concerns over this. I don't think this goes far enough. I think this is window dressing, and I would like to see something more serious be put together, so I, I vote no.
Madam Chair, on Bill Number 29, there are four ayes, two noes, and one absent.
Motion carries. Bill Number 29 is perfected.
Bill Number 32, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
Please hold.
Bill Number 32 is held.
Bill Number 33, introduced by Councilmember Clancy. Madam Chair, we have a substitute bill.
Please read the substitute bill.
Substitute Bill Number 1 for Bill Number 33, introduced by Councilmember Clancy, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to accept a grant of up to $236,000 from the Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services, appropriating the same for support of the overdose data to action project and authorizing execution of necessary documents, authorizing acceptance of equivalent grants through 2022.
I move for adoption of Substitute Bill Number 1 for Bill Number 33.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Substitute Bill Number 1 for Bill Number 33 is adopted. I would like to move to perfect Substitute Bill Number 1 for Bill Number 33.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Substitute Bill Number 1 for Bill Number 33 is perfected.
Bill Number 34, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to perfect Bill Number 34.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill Number 34 is perfected.
Bill Number 34, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to perfect Bill Number 34.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill Number 34 is perfected.
Bill Number 35, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to perfect Bill Number 35.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill Number 35 is perfected.
Bill Number 36, introduced by Councilmember Fitch.
This bill is one that basically would protect Prop P funds from being used to be spent on a lawsuit. Let me first of all compliment the county executive and his staff for this most recent settlement where you committed to not using Proposition P funds. However, I am still awaiting the Prop P meeting that we're going to have for Committee of the Whole, so I will hold it until we have that.
Bill Number 36 is held.
Bill Number 37, introduced by Councilmember Clancy. Madam Chair, we have a substitute bill.
Please read the substitute bill.
Substitute Bill Number 1 for Bill Number 37, introduced by Councilmember Clancy, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a contract and subsequent renewals with the Regional Health Commission to strengthen wellness and prevention efforts for substance and use disorder treatment.
I move for adoption of Substitute Bill Number 1 for Bill Number 37.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Substitute Bill Number 1 for Bill Number 37 is adopted. I move to perfect Substitute Bill Number 1 for Bill Number 37.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Substitute Bill for, Bill Number, Substitute Bill Number 1 for Bill Number 37 is perfected.
Bill Number 38, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to perfect Bill Number 38.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill Number 38 is perfected.
Bill Number 39, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
Please hold.
Bill Number 39 is held. Final passage.
Bill Number 320, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
Councilman Tracus and I are still working out this issue. This pertains to the county's vagrancy ordinance. We need some more time. Therefore, we will hold Bill Number 320.
Bill Number 14, introduced by Councilmembers Tracus, Daye, Dunaway, Fitch, Walton Gray, Clancy, and Harder.
Please hold.
Bill Number 14 is held. We do have a committee of the whole. This is about the floodplain development bill. The committee of the whole will be next Tuesday, the 18th of February, at 4 o'clock. Bill Number 14 is held.
Bill Number 19, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to hold, or I move to, I move for final passage of Bill Number 19.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Daye?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Before I vote, this is one I asked to be held last week so we can investigate whether or not these funds, this $1.5 million, would be coming from Prop P or from general revenue. We were able to determine this is coming from Prop P, so I sent a question to the Budget Director today asking if the Prop P fund can absorb a $1.5 million expenditure. He said it could without causing it to be overbudgeted, because it's a one-time expense. So I appreciated him answering that question quickly, and I vote aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Councilmember Harder?
I, too, had some concerns about this, dealing with Prop P, but I've been assured by our Budget Director and our, our Budget Director for the Council that this was already looked into and accounted for in our current budget, so I'll take their word for it. I vote aye.
Madam Chair, you have six ayes and one absent.
Bill Number 19 is finally passed.
Bill Number 30, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move for final passage of Bill Number 30.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Daye?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Madam Chair, you have six ayes and one absent.
Bill Number 30 is finally passed.
Bill Number 31, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
I move for final passage of Bill Number 31. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Daye?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Madam Chair, you have six ayes and one absent.
Bill Number 31 is finally passed.
Madam Chair, we have no resolutions this evening, so we'll move to unfinished business. Item Number 1, 6th District.
I move that liquor license be approved as requested. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item Number 2?
Please hold on the order of business, and that will be the order.
Item Number 3.
The appointment of, I move for the appointment of Vivian McBride be approved as recommended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And the appointment for Alonzo Reed will be dropped from the order of business.
Item Number 4.
Please hold on the order of business. Same motion through item Number 6, and that will be the order.
Moving on to new business, we have five prepared orders to see.
I move for the adoption of Order Number 1.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Order Number 1 is adopted.
Move for the adoption of Order Number 2.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Order Number 2 is adopted.
Move for the adoption of Order Number 3.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Order Number 3 is adopted.
I move for the adoption of Order Number 4 and 5.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Orders Number 4 and 5 are adopted.
Motion to adjourn? Second.
Meeting is adjourned. All, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The meeting is adjourned.